The main items on the agenda will be a building permit for Billy Stubbs for adding six antennas, six R R U S and two H C S two point oh hybrid COVIDs. At the two hundred and eighty-five foot center line proposing a ten by fifteen lease area with an eight by ten platform. Included inside the lease area located on the northwest quarter, section twenty township one twenty-nine, range seventy-six.
Oh, I think that's wrong. This should be the one east of Strasburg. This is one thirty-one seventy-six.
What thirty-one seventy-six?
Yeah.
How's it on the application?
Yeah, that's.
Billy Stubbs.
It's on behalf of T Mobile.
Okay.
Oh, that's on that tower.
Yeah, they're just adding to it.
They're just doing antenna replacements.
Yeah, on the permit, it's one thirty-one seventy-six.
Are they adding a platform that must be inside the dispensary and stuff, some super designs?
Yeah, they're doing within it. Yeah, Morris, that's what they're doing. It's the same.
So I have a motion to approve table or deny a building permit for Billy Stubbs for adding the antennas on the stable site. Motion by Commissioner Maiteri to approve the building permit is our second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Miller. Is there any more discussion on building permit for Billy Stubbs for antenna work? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Permit approved. Next would be a building permit for Lauren Vandervoorst to erect a two hundred by sixty storage building on northwest quarter of section twenty township one twenty-nine, range seventy-six.
Where the stars at?
Yeah, that's, um, is it Lewis?
Yeah, Lewis.
Lewis, yeah. Yeah, it's in that yard, but three hundred feet off the road, just to the east of the grain business there, so there's no problem there.
No issue.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Commissioner Everly makes a motion to approve a building permit for Lauren Vandervoorst is our second by Commissioner Maiteri. Is there any more discussion on building permit for Lauren Vandervoorst? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose. Permit approved. Next is a building permit for Joseph Arnn hours for, is it Nowers? Nowers?
Nowers.
Nowers. For grading prep site for mobile home to be moved and erected on the, and the thirty by thirty detached garage. On point six nine acre tract, the west half, the southwest quarter, northwest quarter, the southeast quarter, the southeast quarter. And the east half, the east half of the southeast quarter, the northeast quarter, the southwest quarter, the southeast quarter of section.
Well, that's all gonna be plotted out.
Most of the cattails like that.
This is all plotted out.
That was pretty good. I mean, come on, that was a lot.
You were the first one building in.
Correct.
Correct?
Yeah, it was originally part of Larry's lot there and then he split it off and sold that piece to him.
Larry.
Larry Heath, Heath or Huthar, yeah.
Oh, that, yeah, I know where that is.
So this is right on the corner where you go south now further.
Yeah, south, just south of the resort, yeah. The only thing I first saw was thirteen point seven feet from the south part of the line, but I just spoke to him, he'll make that fifteen.
Um, it's closer to twenty-five.
So is it?
Quite situated that way and there's another eight feet from that they want level to come in and set the mobile home.
Okay, well, you're gonna well past that then.
Yeah, well, yeah, so.
You need fifteen, you think you're gonna be twenty plus?
Yes.
Okay.
And the garage is gonna end up being over sixty feet from the road, if you're not marked and maybe there's water line and it's.
Round the side?
Too close to your garage where the guy's gonna use it.
And then have you heard from Lana Schmidt with Western Plains?
I, it's not completed, so I was gonna have Rick Olson doing the, uh, uh, tank.
Yeah.
Or after talking to Lana, she said she'd grant me the variance that Rick would say that he can get it in there and I don't know for him to do another drain field.
Yeah.
The only trick is Rick called me last week and he's gonna retire, so I got to number somebody else and I'll talk with Lana about that too when that gets closer.
Yeah, since it is.
That, that one acre requirement is actually more of a rule of thumb, you wanna talk? You can fit a, but if you can fit the system to the adequate size and the adequate setbacks, she'll allow us.
She'll allow us.
It's just typically, what saves it is more likely there's rural water and a well.
There's rural water and it's very sandy soils.
Right, but I mean, the big issue is a well, because usually from the setback to the well, setback from the property lines, if you don't have an acre, it's gonna be very tough. So rural water is allowing these guys because they don't need that well setback, so that's a big, so yeah, he probably, it could probably be done, so, uh. So yeah, no other issues on the setbacks.
No, everything else looks fine.
Okay. Well, thanks for coming in and clarifying that.
Sure.
And, um, so I guess I'll undertake a motion to approve table or deny the building permit for Joseph Nowers.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Hall makes a motion to approve is our second by motion.
I'll check it.
Seconded by Commissioner Maiteri, is there any more discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose. Permit approved.
Thanks for coming in, guys.
Thank you. Next is, uh, six county regional commissioners meeting Tuesday, September tenth, ten AM, Steel Ambits.
She just wants an R S V P.
I will be here my.
I don't know if I'll be here, but if I am, I'll certainly be attending. It's at what time?
Ten AM at Steel Ambits.
Ten at Steel Ambits, ten AM.
Gary, go ahead.
No, I.
September tenth.
Okay.
Are you going down?
No. I'm sure there's, um, building permit for Gerald and Denise Van Deek to construct a seventy-five by thirty-five home with a twenty-eight by twenty-eight attached garage. On lot nine of Rice Lake subdivision located on the north half, section four township one twenty-nine, range seventy-five. It's on the south side of the lake.
Yeah, setbacks are good. This is on the south side?
Yeah. Yeah, I heard.
Commissioner Everly makes a motion to approve the permit for Gerald and Denise.
Which way did it go in?
From the west end there, right?
Oh, you kinda have that, you kinda have enough room there, huh?
Yeah, I have room. He'll have enough. It'll be, he said over twenty, I checked the measurements, it'll be over twenty, he needs at least fifty, so, and seventy feet from the road.
I'll check it.
Motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? I will be abstaining due to a conflict of interest.
That sounds like filler, man.
Supposed to be, I don't know, I did it two years ago when you invited me to do it and I was, I don't know, I gotta double check, but last I heard, I have to bid, so.
Denise has shots, right?
Couldn't tell ya. I haven't, I've only spoken with Gerald a few times and then I would just go. So we have a motion and a second, is there any more discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Abstentions? Just to be clear. Permit approved. On the second page. Okay, last, last permit is gonna be a building permit for Bill Geiger and Bev Anton. Place a twenty by eight shipping container that will be sided on lot one of Beaver Bay subdivision, section twenty-three, township one thirty-two, range seventy-nine. We didn't have any zoning issues or anything.
Nope, and he was aware of the whole color and siding thing, so he's gonna side it to make a match his house. Um, and it's gonna be back, setbacks are good, he's moved some trees back here. Um, he said it won't be sided right away, but that probably won't be an issue, but he's, he seemed like he's gonna make it look nice right away.
Looks neat.
Yeah.
Do we give a timeline or something like that?
I guess.
I'd say it's next year, next year, then.
Someone rats them out a year from now, then we've got to address it. Good news, the shipping containers are easy to get rid of.
Yeah, we should have a timeline, otherwise, uh, it's gonna sit there for two years.
I, I guess in my opinion, you should give them a year then, because, yeah, I mean, just because it's hard to get contractors, it's hard to get materials sometimes, I, I don't know. Because is there, is there an issue with compliance with the variants? Does it say it has to have like a similar color, right? We did, we addressed that.
Yeah, tan or white.
Okay. So it's probably, it's probably not out of line to give a one year.
Yeah.
Like, which is.
And I'm not sure what color it is at the beginning, but let's see what it looks like first.
Well, so he wants to put the same color as hell.
He's gonna side it to make it match, uh, and he's got steel siding.
Yeah, that was his spray.
Whether he signs it, or signs, paints it, whatever, as long as it matches the building of that needs our.
He wants to match the house.
Yeah. That's what I remember we addressed it in some ordinance stuff a couple of years ago.
They're twice the building as a little building built out of.
And I think it works that, it's gonna be, it's gonna be hard to see even, it's gonna be down back to the corner away, so, but still, it's part of the ordinance, so we should check on it.
I guess really in the, do we really need to put a one-year deal? I mean, my opinion is, is we grant the permit, they put it on, after a reasonable amount of time, if somebody goes out there and it's not done, and then you address it whether or not you're gonna do it.
After a while, go for it completely, too.
Right, I don't, like, putting a one-year timeline, are we gonna actually track it to the date, or is it just one of them deals where after a while, you're gonna be like, come on, that needs to get done?
That, yeah.
I mean, I think that's probably a better route than putting specifics on it, but, I mean, if we had something in the ordinance that we're allowing up to a year, we don't have anything in there, do we?
No, not for.
So we're kinda just pulling that out of the air, unless they'll just let it do it and hope it gets done for a red timing.
Makes sense.
These containers are sweet, now we got side doors open, we got four doors.
We get nice ones, right, there's been guys modifying, they're just as nice as the building, so I, I mean, really, you think it was no different than someone building a shop? Well, if they told you they're gonna build a pink shop, you're like, wait, wait, but if they build it, and later they make it pink and you address it, right? If pink is not allowed, another bad example. Okay. Just trying to be detailed, Maiteri, I don't need to get into it, so, do we have a motion to approve table or deny building permit for Bill Geiger?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Maiteri makes a motion to approve is our second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Miller, is there any more discussion on building permit for Bill Geiger? Not hearing any, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose. Permit approved. With that, that's the conclusion of the agenda items, all you want to do is approve of the bills. Oh, there it goes.
Cause he asked me to get some search, you didn't, yeah.
Yeah.
We have offended that he was trying to get it on, but they just looked on by after they were.
Any, any resolution to the cattail road, I am not offended by it. I mean, full support, whatever is done to come to a resolution. I'd say the best thing to do is forward that to old engineering, so they have some familiar area with it, and see if it's something they can use or work with, or, I had no idea that it was.
I did, neither. So I think this was important, you said, like, did that presentation.
They always make it sound good up front. Make it sound good up front.
Yeah. He was pretty fast, Tom.
Yeah, it's like he's trying to catch everything, and they just talk to the ass, it's like, okay, it's pulled out.
So you got, are you out of it? Are you from Lynn here, or are you out of it?
Uh, actually, I live, I've been to South Dakota, and then it's coming here, and also the right time here.
Oh, okay.
You still have Kelly, too?
Do what?
Is Kelly still working, too?
Yeah, she is, she's fine, you need a supervisor?
Sure.
She's got her, she's got her hands full this month, you said.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah. You know, to just kind of piggyback a little bit on that conversation we're having about, you know, roads, as far as like roads that were worked on and if we should be working on or whatever. I don't know if there's a specific process to it, or do people just go out and do it, but there is also the scenario of getting a maintenance road. I don't know how you declare one, or if there's a process you should do, or do you just go out and basically just put a sign up that says, yeah, we lay this every once in a while?
Once a year.
I mean, if that's another avenue that wants to be pursued, I have no idea how it works or if there's a specific system to it.
Do we furnish a dead-end sign?
We usually furnish signs for specific things, like if people request a.
Felix Bumgarde out there by Rainy Shively, you know where Rainy lives, do you know?
Yep, yep.
That goes down, and then the road goes to the west, it goes down to the old Felix Bumgarde place. There's a gal that lived there with her spouse, they divorced, I'm sure, or whatever, she asked for a dead-end sign because Maverick Haggard comes in loaded. And they come in and turn around and the bridge, she said, isn't fit for this weight, and she says something to.
I know where it's at.
Yeah, I do, too, they divorced. So she asked if they would furnish a paper road end, dead end. Do I talk to Gerald or what is that?
Yeah, typically, some of you contact the road super ten, and they would go off, because there's a couple of guys that have specific training in signage, as far as how far from an obstacle, right, where to send it. You probably just contact them and have them go look at it and how appropriate to sign it.
That's what I told her to do.
They had an issue, they would probably ask us, like, hey, when am I normally supposed to do this?
That's right, I couldn't give her an answer.
I'd say just, just contact the road department.
So then she wanna put it way up in the road?
I have no idea.
Well, there's certain.
So they don't cross the bridge in it.
There's certain specifics with some of those signs, as far as, you know, thousand feet before an obstacle, and, you know, that's, them guys go to training for that without that and stuff, so. Best thing to do is be to contact them, tell them the issue, and they'll appropriately sign it.
Sure, then I'll make road construction down here.
On the bridge?
On the bridge, should I, yeah, but what happened with, that's up in the other way, where they demolished like the other ground, and we did, but we did.
Yeah, well, it's awesome, as long as that project was taken, now it's gonna take even longer, because we gotta fix the hand guardrail again. Somebody clipped it with a semi.
Coming in, you didn't see it on the left-hand side?
The assumption that you got.
Built that guardrail like a piece of what?
They thought a semi, yeah, right there.
A semi on the road for sure.
Trail or loaded or something.
I've seen something where it was assumed it was a tractor trailer, but.
Sure, taking them long enough there, though, I mean, there's no.
They already have their own rights signs.
It's not an easy deal, with rebar stuff, you toss it in the basin, I love it.
Yeah, I used to hardly ever see anybody working there.
Well, whatever, I will pass judgment on it.
It's taken a fair bit, no doubt.
It's true.
Industrial builders, then they must have certain parts slipped out, well, cause like Northern improvement did some paving work one day, and then, uh, Dakota Fence was doing the guard rail, and so. Yeah. Industrial must be doing like the main bridge work, and they shipped out the other stuff to. Bid it out for the paving, the other stuff, and so. They were pounding sheet piling by that intersection by the oasis through whatever, and I was parked there, come on, I was like listening on the radio all of a sudden, just like, how my pickers making a weird look up here, or back in that minute? It took about quarter of a second, so you would see a hit and then you'd hear it, so you're like, didn't even know where it was coming from right away, boy, was that loud, though.
It's amazing when they drive that down with the bedrock.
And the smoke coming off that, that powder, you don't know, I mean, that was.
What they had, what they used to come down, but.
Oh, they did it up there in there.
That's what we're doing, it's like two hundred.
But that sheet pile, that's expensive, like, when you have to do that, that like, it's like times a half.
Who's it like, John Eerich?
They did it, salt protocol, they did it, it was building, it was red, and then they, the engineers screwed up when they drilled the core holes. They missed the bedrock, so they had to stop, reboard, figure out where it was at, and then they had to add on to the piling, I mean, but it's one of them cost plus deals, bigger. And I talked to Jack, the general contractor, the owner, he said, oh, man, this is a bad deal. I gotta post pump it up with thirty, you know? Yeah, I gotta post pump it in your hand, and that's heavy enough to handle. I think we're gonna have to do that shit. My shoulders will not be able to manage.
When I was on the surveying crew from K L J there, right out of college, we were doing, we were staking out subdivisions right above Rapid City. I don't, I don't know how the heck anybody's even building up there, and it's just, it's just all rock, the trees, and, and them guys are just, it's just, we couldn't even pound rebar for the corner, for the property corners. You couldn't even pound re, I mean, you pounded in there, it was, you know, cause once you broke the rock, it did get tight, I mean, it was, I mean, they were still, you know, tight-ish, but nothing was solid, like, you're just going, how in the heck did they even build anything up here?
But you watch where they build the roads down there, it's insane, they're building that shale, those, the hills, the mountains, and they bust up all that shale. And they use that for fill-in on that road that's built, it's phenomenal, they said there's no settling. And I believe them. But what an expense to work with.
Well, it's so hard to get water and like sewer up in them areas, and it's like, a lot of them are just like holding tanks for the septic, cause there's no, there's no material that, you know, leach into, there's no sewer veins.
You put in your septic tanks, and there's a creek running right there, and you have septic drain fields.
Well, then they gotta go, and some of them guys, they'll only let them do a holding tank, and they gotta get it pumped, you know, every three months or whatever, and that's, pretty wild how they wanna develop on there. And then expensive properties, you know, I mean, like, I mean, they develop in areas most people wouldn't even think possible, then when they do it, then they're, they're million dollar properties.
I thought the idea of buying a couple of miles down there, again, that it was developed, but we're in a hard niche. You bought it about four hundred and sixty thousand bucks for a lot. A lot, so you want two, two, yeah, about three, I would suggest you buy it.
Insane. Do they still have a problem with like so many like houses for sale in Deadwood and stuff? Cause I mean, it wasn't long ago when I was down there, you could rent like half the houses in that town, because people, you know, they're.
R D Os.
Right, I mean, there were a bunch of them where like they actually were saying it was kind of becoming a problem, where like people weren't even living in town, there was only these houses and that amount, and they'd only stay for a month and see or something, and then they were gone.
There's two three million dollar homes in my territory to the east in that development, and they're R D O units, they're beautiful, holy shit, there's so much money. But it's gotta be an investment for people out of the city somewhere, but it's, it's an investment deal. Yeah, I'm gonna get this for you to make sure I'm not wrong, it's not, it's not, it's not.
Why do you do the time carding, Justin?
I don't need to kind of time card, I have to work the puncture.
They just write it down on there.
Okay, you're here, but you can call them, they're ready to call.
I think batteries are cheap, aren't they? Two hundred and fifty bucks for, you know, like a decent sized battery, you know, something.
Very worn out, something.
Well, right, I mean, so it's just, they're putting it just crazy, like, even my own stuff, every time you go get it, it used to be like a hundred and twenty bucks, whatever, now it's two, three hundred dollars for a model. You know, it's funny, like, with a business, there's always just things that you just, you don't even price check, you just order, you know, like, I was joking, every day I was talking to somebody's mechanic, like, you price check grease, or you just, you buy grease? Cause I never used to, you just used to like, hey, since you're here, give me two cases of grease, now you gotta price check, cause you're gonna drill, and you're like, oh my God, ten dollars or two, you know, like.
That's insane, too.
Even with me, like, I used to just order like PVC glue primer.
Yeah.
When the delivery man came once a year, and he'd be like, hey, give me a case of each, now you do it, and you get the bill, you're like, oh my God, I got, you gotta take this back, I can't take this, like.
You don't wanna lose it, yeah.
Just crazy, like, the amount of stuff, that's why it's so funny when they talk about, oh, like, on the radio, they're like, well, for the month of June, inflation is down, I'm like, yeah, it might be down. A tenth of a percent for the month, but it's up, and these, oh, inflation's only what, eight percent, such, are you out of here, there's no way. I look at things, I keep a stack of ship tickets for like when I've gotten stuff from a year ago, a year and a half ago, and I, it's just because that's where I throw them, and then. I went through there the other day, I was cleaning my desk, and I found stuff from like a year and a half ago, it's amazing, just from like a year and a half ago, what, what you paid for things, just like in our business, like.
Oh.
You're looking at stuff and you're like, that's kind of seven dollars in a year, it's only a twenty dollar item, and you're getting, and I don't think it's any like one person's fault, it's just, it's a little more expensive here, then it costs more to ship it to this point, then the seller costs more to ship it to me, and I. And you're looking, you're looking at these prices on stuff, and you're just going, and you know, and then like even just talking to my dad, you know, when I tell him I'm a little bit paper things, he's like, oh my God, cause, you know. He remembers just five, ten years ago, when he was, where he's like, I didn't even price check that, so he just ordered it by the case, or the, you know, screws, bolts, nuts, like, you just, wherever you were, you just, give me a case of them, what, I'll need them. And you go and you get the bill, you're like, whoa, maybe I only need fifty, I don't, I don't need a whole case.
That sounds good, yeah.
It's gotten crazy, just in general, I bet if you talk to any business in town, what's something you just, you buy a case of, and you don't even price check, you know, and they'll tell you, it's, it's doubled.
Tripping up.
Like, you can't even afford to buy a case of some of this stuff anymore, now without, you know, marking up your prices somewhere else, it's just.
And then they're upset at you, cause you tried to price.
Well, it's no different than that, it's just, it's just gotten crazy, where like, that's why when they talk about inflation and all these different things, you just kind of laugh, cause you're like, yeah, I suppose if you accumulated everything that exists, it's only eight percent. I'd like to find the stuff that's going down that much to equal that out, because everything I'm finding is double and triple, so, well, if you guys are done looking at bills, I'll undertake a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn?
Just a minute.
Who motioned you?
I suppose they're calm.
I should call them.
So what's, what's going on?
I don't know, call me ASAP before the meeting is over.
Who?
Right last longer.
Okay, well, the meeting's not over, so.
That's why.
Yeah, give them a call.
Yeah, Russ. Dan, I just, yeah, the meeting's still in, uh, it's not adjourned, I just seen your phone, yeah. Yep. Offer, yep. Just a minute. Russ, is it okay to put you on speaker?
Well, you have to, we're meeting.
Okay, hang on a minute. Here, just a minute.
Put it up on speaker, then.
Okay, just a minute, go ahead.
Go ahead, Russ.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay, good morning, guys, um, I just spoke with Tanya there from HR department, um, she had came back with a seventy-eight thousand dollar offer. Um, that's, that's respectable, it really is, I, I guess we're on board on that, and she also included a four percent increase for the yearly, the yearly raise. Um, what I'm thinking, you know, is I talked to her about the separation from the foreman to the superintendent. And she came back with the years of service and stuff that Carr has and stuff like that, um, I totally understand all that, but at the same time. I still don't know if I really agree with the separation, just because of the fact that, that the headache and all the problems come back to the superintendent. And at some time, you know, if he's gonna assume all the responsibilities, I think there should be a little bit more compensation, or separation, I should say, between the two. Because if you do the math right now, Carr actually has already made this year what the superintendent was willing to make for the whole year, with his overtime factor in. So he, he's actually, I mean, on, on a good year, or a hard year, where you have some snow removal and such, he's actually going to make more than the superintendent is. And I, I just don't know if I agree with that.
Why, what in your voice is it? What are the other guys feeling like, yeah, I hear you, Russ. And Tanya did indicate that, that the separation isn't fair to the superintendent, the way it's so structured as of now. My wife, she indicated.
Right now, you probably six thousand more than the foreman.
Right, that's without overtime, and, you know, you factor in a year, which, which they're working, you know, they have the, the right basically to work fifty hours a week if they want to, if, if I'm following things, right? So depending on what he chooses to do, he could easily made that up for this year already, and, and surpassed the superintendent.
Right, but they also have a deal, in six months, they're looking at, after your probation, looking at, uh, increase on your wage.
Everybody gets that, everybody gets that, right?
Nope.
Nope.
Nope. Nope.
You get a four percent increase, right, Josh? A four percent increase.
I have you guys approved.
Yeah, a four per, Chris, four percent increase.
Every, all the employees.
In January one.
All the employees that get that, yeah.
That's considered a pro.
Yeah, all the employees get the four percent, but then yours also has a six mon, after six months, they can do an increase on your wage after probation.
If Gar was to resign as foreman. He indicated he, he was not really uninterested in that, would that change?
Then whoever would be the foreman, all depends what their year of service.
Right.
Gar, I think Gar had quite far the most to anybody.
And Gar indicated to you and to me.
Yeah, so that, so that was, you know, Gar would resign as fo, uh, foreman, then you pick somebody else out, then their, that wage would go down.
And he wasn't discombing at all, Gar indicated, so I really don't want this position, I really had no say in this position. It was a voice of the guys within the shop and he said, I had one say myself and that's not like this ended up this way, I didn't want it.
But i- is it really fair to take the money away from someone? Like the, the new guy, the new guy coming in, if, if Gar does step down from that position, the new guy coming in is going to say. You know, Gar was getting this, why, why am I only getting this?
See, Gar was getting it based on his years.
Seniority.
Yeah.
On that step up.
If you hired somebody for that job that was only on there for three years, that would make a big difference.
Okay.
Big difference.
Okay, um, okay, the next question I would have is, is this something that has to be hashed out right now or can I have a little bit of time to, to think on things? I mean, is this giving a decision immediately?
No, I think Tanya was gonna get a hold of you, correct?
And she did.
Okay.
But then she, she also indicated, I asked her, I said, is it better if I just contact the commission themselves to avoid the bidding app? And, and she said at this time, she said, you probably can't after we got this far, she said, there would be no problem with that.
Well, the bottom line in my opinion is this, we have a position that we're offering for seventy eight thousand dollars, which is an increase from the previous one. I don't think you can count overtime on anybody's else's pay as comparison, you gotta take the annual salary. It's also gonna be up to the road superintendent how much overtime these guys work, so their income is gonna kind of be based on the schedule that you delegate, so there's, you can't. Count overtime, if we have another winter like last year, these guys are gonna put in four tens, you'll have that separation. The other idea is also that you are coming on as a new superintendent under probation, so this pay is negotiable down the road, but at some point we have to have a. A point where the county is also retaining some kind of value too, we can't just offer just what everybody wants all the time, I think we've. We've probably gone as high as we've ever gone and are probably willing to even go higher if that person fits the position, but I think we kind of have to. There's gotta be a little bit of an understanding, Russ, just to the fact that there's a job here that if you're the right candidate and you succeed. You could, you could potentially make the kind of income you're probably looking to get, but to just, you know, give you something specific right off the top of the bat without. You know, having some probation and some, kind of some wait and see type scenario, it's kind of hard to answer that, I mean, I. I feel like we just, we discussed the wages, no offense to you or, or trying to even, you know, assume what your value is, it's the value that we're willing to pay for a new road superintendent, no matter how that person is or who it is, so. I think the other problem or the other solution to this is that the road superintendent historically, and I'm not naming any one superintendent. Has had issues with delegating work. I think that would be your responsibility to make sure that those people are getting delegated other duties. If they don't want those duties, then they can resign those positions and other people can step in or then you can promote how you see fit, so. If you feel like you have too many responsibilities for your pay and someone else doesn't have enough, that is your responsibility to make sure that that person is fulfilling those positions, you know, if. If someone's a foreman and they're getting a really good wage because of their seniority and you feel like they should shoulder more of the load, that's your responsibility to delegate that, and so I think. You're actually able to answer a lot of your questions and solve a lot of your issues and if it's six months to a year. Things are going great, we're seeing improvements in management the way we want to see it. There's room for negotiation, I think, at some point, I, I don't think that's out of line, it's just as long as it comes from a position of, you know, reason, you know, is reasonability a word? I don't, I guess, as long as there's a reasonable approach to it and it's an understanding and negotiated in good faith. I think there's an avenue to work in, but I think at some point, in my opinion, we just kind of have to draw a line at this is what we're offering a new road superintendent. If you want the position and you want to make it yours, take it and let's, let's try and work on improving it later on rather than trying to make it the perfect offer before we even start. Does that fair, Russ? I mean, does that make sense?
Yes, it totally, it totally does, Erin, and I totally understand and, and again, I was basing my, my figures and my facts on what Gar's getting paid now, I, I did not know that. If that position was offered to someone else, that you guys would change that salary, I thought if I understood it right when that was all, um, delegated out a year or so ago. That that position granted this salary, just like John's position granted him that salary. I didn't really know it was based on years of service, I thought this, the foreman was going to get the foreman wage. And, and that's where I come with, with my arguments here on, on the separation that every year I understand everyone does get a percentage of a raise. But there's never going to be any more separation, is where I'm coming from. And I, I just, I, I think, based on, from what I see and from what I know, guys, and, and this is arguable on your side, I'm sure. But I consider who's ever coming into this position, um, i- is taking on a, a pretty good task, it's taking on some stuff that needs to be straightened out. Um, I don't know if that's arguable for you guys or not, but there's a lot going on here that I, I consider this a twenty four seven job. I don't really put an hourly amount on it, just knowing that, um, it's going to commit your life to it, just straightening things out is how I see it.
That sounds good on my part.
You know, if, if that's right or wrong, I mean, I'm sure there's gonna be some good points and bad points to that, but. I think, you know, just like anybody, I'm just asking to be compensated, um, for what I'm going to put into it. And, and Scottler, I think, asked for the same, he was asking for the same and he did get a lot accomplished in that amount of time. So, um, if, if it is possible, I, I appreciate the offer and everything, um. I would just, if, if it's okay, I would like a little bit of time to try to think things through a little bit if that's possible.
Well, I, I, I think the typical situation would be is we want a road superintendent by October seventh. If you want to take a couple of days or a week to think about it, I think that should just be a part of your decision, that's our, that's kind of our timeline, we want to get someone in here so we can. Make sure we're getting our ditched mode and our, and our gravel situation put away and getting things prepped for winter and. We need, we need someone here, you know, before the snow flies, so I guess my opinion of that the board should hold is we want someone here by October seventh. If that fits your timeline and you want to take a week to chew on it, I don't have a problem with that. It just is so you realize that you're essentially losing a week of notice, which is, it's a weird situation with you because you're self-employed, so you're not really giving anybody else notice other than maybe some customers on some projects. How you want to sort that out is your own business, but I'd just say we have a hard deadline of October seventh, that's when we want you. If, if, I, I would request you give us a week. Like, if you're not gonna take it, you know, I would, I would think within a week, if you're not gonna take it, I would appreciate knowing so we can make our plans how we have to make them, is that, is that fair, Russ?
Yes, absolutely, I don't, I don't think it's gonna take a week, I mean, this was, this was thrown at me here basically an hour ago. And I'm trying to negotiate my, the rest of my life.
Yeah, no, I get it.
Giving an hour sign here, so, um, if, if, if you guys could just give me a day or two is basically what I'm asking for.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think just to be fair, why don't we just give you till Friday, if you want to answer tomorrow, that's fine, but we'll, we'll give you till September sixth at noon. And who are you contacting?
If you get back tomorrow, it's by tomorrow or today yet, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, just give me a little bit of time here to kind of run things through and stuff like that, um. Yeah, I will, yeah, I'll be in touch with you guys here soon, okay?
Okay.
Okay, wait, before we hang up there, who, who are you gonna be in touch with, what are we gonna do, because here's the scenario now.
Who do you want to contact, Russ?
If Russ comes back with a counter offer.
To Tanya.
Right, okay, do we want to have Russ contact Tanya?
Are you okay with that, Russ?
Yes.
Because she's a neutral party.
Okay, well then, but then the other clarification since we're discussing this, if there's a counter offer, we're more than likely gonna have to have a special meeting. Cause we're not gonna, we're not gonna have one commissioner give an approval of the phone or anything like that, Tanya's not gonna have that kind of authority, so it's gonna be understood. It's gonna be understood that if there's anything other than an acceptance, we're gonna have to have a special meeting because even if Russ declines, we'll have to have a special meeting to decide. How, are we gonna re-interview, are we gonna hire the next person, whatever, so just so everybody's under that understanding, we're gonna have to have a special meeting coming up if there's anything other than an acceptance of this offer. And not anything, anything other than an acceptance of the current offer, we're having a special meeting.
Do you hear this, Russ?
Yes, I do.
Okay, sure, everything, everybody agrees?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, I will contact Tanya here within the next day or two and give you guys an answer, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Be no other business before the board. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
So a second, second by everybody?